Good evening and welcome to the regular board meeting of the St. Peter School Board. It is Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are in the St. Peter Community Center Governor's Room. First item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order, and it is like six thirty-two, right on the dot. Uh, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, Kimberly, do we have any, oh, no, sorry. Need to consider and adopt the agenda that is before you and also in the board book. We have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? We will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is adopted. Kimberly, do we have any requests to speak?
I have not received any.
Thank you. Next up is consideration of the consent agenda, which is in the packet before you and in the board book. If there are any items that you'd like to pull out and discuss, please let me know, otherwise we would consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I will say that I went through all the bills and wire transfers and that. Things seem to balance.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Rock star treasurer there.
Yeah.
Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The consent agenda has been approved. Next up is our student spotlight. We have a couple of students tonight. Ms. Akora?
Another chair with us.
Alright.
This is the real reason you all come, isn't it?
A hundred percent the reason.
Good, good evening.
Best part of the night.
Best part of the night.
Welcome.
Oh, my gosh, let's see here. So, I am so lucky today to introduce two very special students from South Elementary. Both of these young ladies are first graders. Um, we have Helen Rutledge and Elisa Wantos. And they were nominated by their teachers for multiple reasons, many reasons, um, for being recognized tonight. So, we are really excited to have them, but before we get too far, they brought a lot of guests. So, I'm gonna have them tell you who all they brought. Do you think you can do that, Helen? Okay, who did you bring with you? Maybe people can kind of give a little wave.
Um, so I brought two of my grandma, and then my stepmom, my mom, my dad, my two grandpas, and my three sisters, and my brother.
Yes, that is quite the fan club. That was really nice of them to come, wasn't it? Yes. And Elisa, you have a fan club too, don't you? Mm-hmm. Who's here with you?
My mom, my grandma, and my aunt.
Yes.
Welcome, everyone.
Yes, lots of support. So, these students show star pride every day, and that was one of the things that their teachers said. And, um, Helen's nomination came from Ms. Alderman. Who is Ms. Alderman to you?
Um.
She's a teacher, yep, but she's a long-term sub, right? She's not there all year, okay? So, Ms. Alderman, and she said that Helen takes great responsibility in class for her own learning and has a strong work ethic. And during independent work time, she produces amazing results. What does independent work time mean?
Um. I don't know.
Okay, so it's time when you're working by yourself, right? So, when you're working by yourself, you're really working hard. And Elisa is very helpful to others. That's what Mrs. Bjorklund said. And you gave me an example when we chatted. What are, what's something that you like to be helpful doing?
I like helping people out when they fall down.
Yes, if somebody falls, kind of helping them out, yes. So, Helen, would you be willing to tell us what you like best about school?
Um, I like free choice and recess so much.
Like free choice and recess. What do you do during free choice?
Um, we get to play at one time. Um, it was my bubble gum party, and I got to chew bubble gum when I was playing.
Yes, yes. And what flavor? You were excited about your flavor.
Um, pink bubble gum.
Pink bubble gum flavor. Elisa, what do you like best about school?
Uh, math.
Math. So, this girl's a numbers wizard over here, mm-hmm. And one thing that Elisa told me is that these two were actually in the same kindergarten class last year, weren't you? Who was your teacher?
I'm Ms. Harvey.
Ms. Harvey. And I thought to myself, boy, she must be a really good teacher if she produced two spotlight students. Was she a pretty good teacher?
Yeah.
Yeah. What's something that you learned in kindergarten that helped you be such a good leader in first grade, either of you? Did she teach you anything special about maybe star pride or?
Like star pride.
Yeah, what does star pride mean? Yeah, what does it mean?
Um, doing good choices and not doing bad things.
Yes, that's for sure. Do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay. Um, our character strong theme this month is, do you, anybody remember what we're studying? Character strong? Grat- uh?
To.
Gratitude, yes. Can you tell some of these grownups what it means to have gratitude?
Um, appreciating the things in your life.
Appreciating things in your life, yeah. Would you be willing to tell me something that you have gratitude for, Elisa?
My mom.
Yes. Moms are pretty special. Are you grateful for anything?
My life.
Just for your whole life? Wow. Gosh. Well, I'm grateful that you came tonight and that you were willing to talk to these grownups with me. Um, do you have any questions for these wonderful first graders?
I haven't got a question, but I have a really good comment for you. You guys did really well talking to all the scary old folks. You just really did a great job. Thank you.
I have a question. Can you tell me your favorite thing that you do out on the playground?
The bars, the one-handed bars.
The one-handed bars. Awesome. Gonna get strong arms. What about you?
Favorite?
The monkey bars.
The monkey bars. I love that upper strength. Awesome.
We got lots of climbers.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you so much for coming. Keep up your star pride and your learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
You're all done, ladies.
And thank you families for being here. Alright, that was awesome.
It was.
Uh, Student Council Report. I don't think we have one. They must be busy with.
Mandatory theater practice.
Mandatory theater practice.
Everybody should be.
Indeed.
Have my tickets.
Alright, uh, next up is action items. The first of which is consider acceptance of gifts, donations, and grants. Dr. Olson?
There are a number of things listed in your packet. A donation of two hundred dollars made to the school district by Paul and Abus McDaniel and Paul and Diane Husso. This donation is to go towards the Emily Crock Scholarship. Emily was a beloved E L teacher within the district, and we appreciate the commitment her family and friends have in continuing to support her love for education. Secondly, the Gouverneurs Performing Arts Association, they continue to offer music lessons through a partnership with St. Peter Community and Family Education. They have provided instructors with a seven hundred and fifty-dollar donation to help defray some of the participant fees for private percussion lessons. And we're grateful for their generosity and continued commitment to inspiring people through music. And then there are two donations in the amount of one thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-five cents from the class of two thousand and twenty-three, and one thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and one cent from the class of two thousand and twenty-one. An attempt was made to connect with class officers over the past year, and that was unsuccessful. So, this money would then end up in the Student Activities account. So, questions? And the booter. No.
I would like to pull items three and four. I just don't feel comfortable in taking funds from classes and putting them in the general activities account. Either we set them aside, identify, and continue to attempt to find people, or I would just feel more comfortable. If we can't get all the officers, we ought to be able to get ahold of someone in those classes who maybe can contact the officers.
I don't know where Mrs. Ingledinger went. Did she?
She went out to take pictures, actually.
Okay, so, um, I, you know, I think, uh, I think we'd be comfortable with that. It's been a past practice to try to clean up these accounts. We certainly could research and explore, uh, trying to find class members. Oftentimes, and this is an experience of, uh, multiple years ago when I was a high school principal, we would, um, the, the class would elect to donate the money for a specific cause. But, uh, you know, I, I don't know what the rest, you think we'd be comfortable with that?
Or at least holding and to see if we can.
Maybe researching and exploring if we can get ahold of the, uh, class members or class officers. If we can't, the money stays in the Student Activities account anyway.
Yeah. I'd just feel more comfortable if they would donate it rather than seize it.
Mrs. Ingledinger, do you want to speak to that one?
Yeah, I can speak to that one. Um, the, when classes graduate with a balance in their Student Activities account, it usually goes and follows them downtown to a bank. Um, it hadn't been being done for a while, and Jordan Paulo is working on that. So, it's been several years that we've been attempting to, to contact these classes to no avail, but we'll keep trying. Typically, that extra money, they have a lot. Some will make a donation, and then they'll leave some, um, to help pay for their class reunions.
Sure.
Is it typical to have about, you know, fifteen hundred to two thousand?
That's a lot. Uh, we, we really don't, I think we've low, we've lowered their dues and all that kind of stuff because hopefully they can afford a reunion by.
Yeah. I was just kind of wondering if we need to look at like the class dues situation, because that's always kind of a contested.
That's tricky for some.
And they do raise money through the prom and pizza sales or something.
Prom. If there's something left over from prom, and the junior class has Peggy's Pizza Sales. So, yeah. But they're, they're, they haven't had a balance for, really since COVID, it seems like, so.
So, like, the class of two thousand and twenty-two, obviously you must have heard from them. And so, they just have elected to do?
Yep, they, it goes, it goes with the class president. If they're around, down to, I think it's homecoming.
So, they just open up an account then?
So, the key maybe is the day of graduation, the class president does not get a diploma.
Corner them. Yes, yes. She's right, uh, right up on stage with me, so I just won't let her down.
And then you say her name, and you're like, and can you please speak into the microphone? Or you would like?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, donations one, two, and five.
Five is in the board packet. It doesn't look like it's indoors. Of seventy.
Go through five, would you please?
Five is the donation from the boosters club, which was.
Seven hundred dollars.
Okay, seventy-seven, twenty-five, eleven, to reimburse for.
Which was higher than our packs of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so the, the motion is to, for, to accept donations one, two, and five, and then hold three and four until we gather more information or can figure out what's those two classes want to do with that money? Okay. So, we have a motion?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much to the, those who donated. Uh, next up, item number two, declaration of obsolete or outdated equipment.
So, your board policy, eight oh two, disposition of obsolete equipment and material, gives direction to us on disposing of obsolete and outdated equipment. And, uh, the process is used on an as-needed basis as equipment is removed, or sometimes as it gets put in storage in multiple different places. Uh, and so, in your materials for the meeting, there's a, a list of materials that are being recommended to be deemed obsolete. If approved, it allows the school district to either dispose of or at a, a auction, try to receive some funds for the equipment. If the equipment is badly damaged or broken, or, you know, it is just unusable, then it would allow us to dispose of the equipment. But we do need board action in order for that to occur. In your packet, there, um, you'll see a listing of the things that are, and were recommended to be declared obsolete and appropriately removed from the district.
So, with this particular list, are, are you saying that it's going to be one way or the other, or you're just saying?
So, some of it will be, uh, and Seth could talk maybe specifically about that. Some of it will be dumped. Some of it will be placed at, at auction. And we, we've used, uh, like, an online auction service in the past.
Correct. Yep, the stuff that's listed now is stuff that's been sitting around, like the thirteen at the middle school, the tables. They've been sitting there since Salt updated their tables. I'm not even sure when that is. It's been quite a while. The seven at North, they're keeping some of the good ones. They need a few extra. The seven that are there are getting changed out for a reason, broken seeds, stripped screws, stuff like that. The chairs, same thing. We have so many chairs sitting around this district right now that we're trying to clean up. Because especially with getting the referendum coming up, we're gonna need as much space as we can to store stuff, move some of the, this old, old stuff out, to move some of the old stuff in to get ready for the auction. That's where this list was derived from, stuff that is, in my opinion, not fit for an auction.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I would move that we dispose of these gems of history.
Oh, you have a motion?
I'll second that.
And a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Seth, for getting rid of that junk. Uh, number three, consider approval of World's Best Workforce Report and Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report. Ms. Ingledinger?
Yes, that is a mouthful.
That is.
Um, that we appreciate from the state. Uh, in the past, it's been the World's Best Workforce Plan. Um, and the state has changed that to what we are lovingly calling CACR, the CACR goals. Um, the, it, I know every year you patiently listen to this explanation, but the report that's in front of you, the multi-page report, is reporting on last year's goals. Um, and those five goal areas for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year are listed on page two. Uh, school readiness, third grade literacy, closing the achievement gap, career, and college readiness for all, and high school graduation. Uh, for the current school year, number two is going away, and they are adding a goal area of preparing students to be lifelong learners. So, we've been talking a lot about what that looks like as a, as a goal. I, I have provided a, a brief, a more brief cheat sheet for you. Um, since this is for, this is for the current school year's goals, the only one that's not on here is that, um, third grade literacy. So, if you go to page four for third grade literacy, um, percentage of all students enrolled in grade three at North Elementary, before December fifteenth, who are proficient on the state accountability test will increase from forty-eight percent to fifty point nine. We met that goal at fifty-three point six in spring of two thousand and twenty-four. And we only expect that to go up now with all of the additional, um, reading instruction that our teachers are getting this year. Um, we met most of our goal areas last year. Goal area one, all children are ready for school. Um, they met that. At eighty-eight point five percent of our kids, um, are, are meeting the, the goal areas or skills necessary, um, for success in kindergarten. I think it was Tracy who pointed out, um, we were over ninety percent in, in all areas but one, uh, in fine motor skills. So, so that's, they're, they're doing really great. And a lot of kids participate in our, um, early childhood programs and kindergarten readiness programs, so they did a fantastic job. Goal area two was not met. Um, the district goal was to reduce the math proficiency gap between English learners and non-English learners, and that goal was not met. Um, we're switching that goal for the, for the current school year to reading, um, since obviously a lot of what we're working on district-wide matches up with switching everybody over to a reading goal. Um, I believe most of our site goals, our building site goals are also, um, fall in line with that reading goal. So, let's, let's hope we do better on, on this year's goal.
And, and, and Mrs. Ingledinger, just to, to clarify, and maybe Jana as well. So, we have all of our K-four teachers in red act training. We have our K-eight special education teachers in red act training. And we have our K-eight English language learner teachers in red act training. So, that really directed us towards that reading goal at third grade because it aligns with all of the professional development we're doing. Did I miss one?
Uh, my only clarification would be that it's only the K-four ELL teachers right now.
Okay.
The five, twelve ELL will be based.
Okay.
Full disclosure, it would have made a lot more sense to have a reading goal last year, um, in this area because, uh, well, all of our E L teachers, um, and at every site had a new reading curriculum, um, reading and speaking curriculum. So, we should be able to see a lot of improvement, um, from our E L learners this year.
Well, hopefully the math scores won't suffer.
Yeah.
Any more than they.
Right.
And we can at least hold that gap.
Yeah, well, in district-wide, our math scores were across the board. We've got some work to do looking at those standards. Goal area three, um, we're able to, we're, we're able to have as many goals as we'd like in each area. Um, so, in order to, um, line up with college and career-ready, uh, we set a, an ACT goal, and the average composite score, score of all those kids graduating in two thousand and twenty-four, um, to be raised from nineteen point eight to twenty, and we met that at twenty point three. Um, the other goal area, number of students earning industry certifications increased by five percent. That is not met. Um, and you'll, if you look in the, in the, um, report, you'll see that we, we had a, we had two resignations of two of our CTE teachers who are able to offer industry certifications. So, we have new instructors in those areas who that's, it is one of their personal professional goals as well to get, um, to be able to offer those industry certifications. So, last year, I believe, the only area that we were able to offer was, um, that certified nursing assistant, which is still a thriving program and a really important one. So, we're proud of that. Um, so, we met fifty percent of tho, of that goal area. All students graduate from high school. I say this every year. It does not feel right to have a goal on paper that is anything less than one hundred percent. Um, because in St. Peter, we know who each and every one of these students are. Um, but we did meet our goal of ninety-two point five percent. Um, and that was a, that was an increase from eighty-eight point one previous year. Goal area five for next year, um, preparing students to be lifelong learners. You'll see that this is worded differently because, and it's not, it's not worded as a SMART goal. Um, but we are, through the course of our work with our social studies department, some would say the backbone of our educational institution, some. Um, the, they're going through the curriculum process right now, and one of the changes that's come along through that is the C-three framework that I've just outlined for you here. And then, um, have a timeline of, of the work that we'll be doing with the Social Studies Department.
So, in that, in that particular C-three framework, the, the focus is, is really on evaluating, discerning, critical thinking.
Yeah.
And, and we felt like those really line up with what you would expect to have in place to be an effective lifelong.
Yes, yep. You have any questions about any of, that's a really brief overview of this report. Um, if you have any questions, let us know.
Mr. Chair? Yeah. I'll, I won't ask all of them, I promise.
Oh, geez.
No, first of all, I really appreciate this report. I find it illuminating and, and very useful in what we're all about and why we're here. Uh, the, uh, the school readiness, you know, that's a, a program that's, we'd like to get fully funded. It's, it's not, but it's critical. This is reflected here, a very important part of our, of what we offer. The, uh, career and, and college readiness, that's encouraging also. I'm pleased to see the number of, of students that took the test, which is, I believe, a hundred and twenty-six, if I recall, or something like that, uh, a hundred and forty-nine or thereabouts, which is also, I think, impressive to have that many students interested in post-secondary. Uh, could you tell me a little bit more about the, uh, industry certification, how that works?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I can. Um, if, if a teacher has the, the proper certification to be able to offer, say, a welding, like a, um, I just put welding on here, but it's called, it's, it has a more official name than just a welding certification. Um, and they have to be able to pass that certification test. The teacher has to be able to, um, to be able to offer that test and verify the kids have, have passed it as well. Um, in the past, we were able to offer welding one and two certifications, um, which is pretty great.
Yeah.
Uh, we'd like to add, um, serve safe certification in our fax department.
Mm-hmm.
Our culinary arts program is wildly popular, and so, if we can, if we can get kids that certification before graduation, um, they can, they can get hired at just about any kitchen, um, wherever they might be.
Employment-ready, which is, which is great.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, my, uh, my compliments on the strategies, the interventions, all those things that are well thought out by the administration and the faculty and the assembly in this.
Thank you.
Just wanted to comment on a couple of things. Um, for people listening, and I think you kind of hit on this with the graduation rate a little bit, that when we're talking about having goals with fifty percent and thirty percent, I don't want anyone to ever think that, wow, like, they're satisfied with that. I, I don't think any of us are, but I also don't think it's realistic to expect that if we do have a fifty-three percent, or I'm making up a number here in any area, to say, well, we're gonna move it to eighty or ninety. Like, you have to be realistic about that. And so, I just know that, you know, you can take one little blip of something and say, wow, like, we have such low expectations, and that's certainly not the case. Um, but the other thing I want to talk about was just that diploma plus program and just kind of highlight that a little more because I really, really think that that will be of, just an awesome program for St. Peter schools. I've always said, like, what is the goal? Is the goal really just to have kids walk across the stage?
Right.
Because if that's the case, whether that's for a kid that's excelling in everything or a kid that's on an I E P, like, what is the goal? Is it just to have them walk across the stage? And then what? And then are they just gonna go home? Are they gonna go to college? Are they gonna work? What are they gonna do?
Right.
And so, I think that, that diploma plus, it just hits all the kids in some capacity, and I just, that excites me.
Great. We're really close just to, for those, for all those people listening, watching. Great, we're really close, just to, for those, for all those people listening, watching.
Yeah.
Um, the diploma plus idea is that every student who graduates with a Saint Peter diploma will have have the plus being, um, they have taken a college course while at Saint Peter High School. They've earned an industry certification, um, were this close to that Minnesota transfer curriculum certification. Or some other sort of work experience while they're in high school.
So you get a diploma, plus something else.
Yes, yeah.
And you'll be hearing about, a lot about it, but it's the first time you're hearing it, but you'll hear about it, exciting.
We're, we're going to market that as well, for sure.
In that regard, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
A diploma from Saint Peter represents twenty-seven credits.
Yes.
Well above the state requirement and well above, I'm guessing, a fair number of other districts. So it is a very meaningful, very meaningful document.
It is, it's a, it's a huge accomplishment to graduate with a Saint Peter diploma.
All right, we do need to approve the.
I'll make a motion to approve the world's best workforce and the Packer report. The comprehensive achievement and civic readiness report.
Yeah, I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Single Dinger.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up is to submit it by our November thirtieth deadline.
Yes, this will be available, the report will be available on our website. Um, and then there's a template that Dr. Olson and I will work on that.
We don't want people to crash the website looking.
Don't get too excited.
We don't want a Netflix situation here, it's true.
The good news is we submit a hundred percent of the reports we make, right?
Yes, yes, we do.
So proud of it. Uh, consider approval of second final reading of revisions to the policy manual.
So this, the, this is policy five twenty-two, Title Nine Sex Discrimination Policy, Grievance Procedures and Process. The policy committee members can certainly speak to this. But this policy had some significant changes due to Title Nine rule, um, variances and changes. And the Minnesota School Board Association recommended that we review and adopt with modifications where appropriate, the, a new model policy. So that's what you had in front of you last meeting, and this is in front of you for a second reading tonight. And I don't know if uh any of the members of the policy committee want to add anything there?
I will just add, I have not heard any, any input from anyone outside of the the policy committee. This is a lengthy policy. Um, and the the changes that were made, um, we have made, the recommended changes have been made. I am very satisfied with the appropriateness.
Yep, and this is a policy that was the the school counselors and others were able to look at to make sure that it aligned with.
It's gone through a lot of review.
Lot of review.
We've also had our school counselors, social workers and principals receive training on the implementation of this policy and the rule changes.
I do have one question though. Is this one where we do our Title Nine person identify?
That has been changed and it's changed in the policy in that we have, now we need to have a Title Nine coordinator. And then we have a Title Nine, what's our, in each building?
Investigator.
Investigator, a Title Nine investigator in each building. So that's a, that's a change. Um, and so we have our Title Nine coordinator in our assurances of compliance is is now that, a different person. Then we have a her, a five oh four coordinator and harassment investigator. But this specifically is, uh, Mrs. Pravky serves as the Title Nine coordinator for the district.
I'm just beginning to wonder how many things we can pile on her. I mean.
Yeah.
So. But she's not here, so I can't ask her.
No, well, and and you know, the other side to that is that the key, the key part is, and I think our principals could add to this. But I think everybody feels good about having multiple investigators. Because it's really in the investigation and the interviewing, et cetera, that is, is that, that's a critical component. Um, and we now have a situation where um an investigator could be a social worker or counselor from the middle school doing an investigation at the high school or vice versa. So they're not interviewing and investigating kids that they're serving in other capacities.
Because are, are all the investigators in the guidance department or social workers?
Yes.
Well, that's, I think that's a good idea that they don't do it in the building they're in.
Yes.
And compromising your ability to deal with it.
Yep. And someone in, and someone in Ms. Pravky's role, that's pretty common to be the Title Nine coordinator. Like, it's not uncommon to have her in that her position be the coordinator.
I agree with that.
Okay, so I would move that we accept uh the five twenty-two policy as submitted for second reading.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next up, consider policies with legislative requirements for approval with one reading.
Dr. Olson. So that would be policy five oh seven corporal punishment and prone restraint. Uh, the legis, key legislative changes added reasonable force language and corrects a legal reference. Uh, so the legal reference is excluding a school resource officer from the prohibition uh of uh prone restraint. Uh, and then the second part is clarifying when reasonable force may be used. And the the significant change to the reasonable force cha- uh modification is reasonable force may be used uh to restrain a child or person in preventing bodily harm or death to another. And that's in both of those definitions. And there used to be the provision that you could also use reasonable force if there were was a property damage situation occurring. That has been removed in the new reasonable force legislative language. So, uh, again, these are, you know, out of the statute and they're now incorporated in the policy. And we would recommend their approval.
And again, I've heard nothing from anyone regarding this, uh, outside, regarding this policy and the legal change that's been made.
It also, it is, is similar to our uh policy five oh six on student discipline in terms of language with school resource officers excluded.
So I just have one question looking at this. Can an adult put a student into a bear hug?
If you're using reasonable.
I mean.
Force to restrain a student who would be a danger to him or herself or others.
So if you're in a fight, you can.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not considered putting pressure on their chest?
I don't believe so.
Not in accordance with stat, their state.
Okay, that's, when I read that, I just don't know what it means to put pressure on it. I can know that you can't kneel on it, but.
Correct.
You know, and have them on the ground. If they're standing, you can restrict the use of their arms and, okay.
If it's a threat to themselves or others.
You're protecting the student or others.
Yeah.
Yeah. That part's understood.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I would move to accept uh the policy five oh seven with the changes that have been recommended.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, policy five oh zero seven is adopted. Thank you. That's it for the action items. Now up is the information items. Ms. Skinner is here to give the community and family education report an update. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight and share some of the good things that have been going on in the last school year with community education. Um, one of the unique things about community ed is it looks different in every community because we are charged with meeting the actual needs of the community and the school district that we serve. And so our programs in Saint Peter look very different from the programs in Mankato or La Sure. Um, but one of the other things that research has shown that people who participate in community education programs are more supportive of their school district. So um we have a lot, a big charge to do. And I want to just share some of the great things that have happened in the last year with you. Uh, community education helps strengthen the community and the school by providing safe, accessible learning environments and opportunities for people of all ages. And we're able to do that because we have great school facilities and buildings that we can use as well as the community center. We also connect families to school and community resources. Um, some of the ways that we do that are through our early childhood family education classes and our school readiness preschool programs. And if you look at the picture to the left, that is a photo of our Community Threads program. This program is designed to bring new community members together to form connections with each other and also to learn more about the community of Saint Peter. And the partners um include the Recreation Department, the Police Department, Public Health, Y W C A, Rivers Edge, M V A C, and our district liaisons as well. And we have been, this is our second year of the program. Um, and it's been a really effective way for us to uh connect our families and our community with some of the services that we have. We also help prepare children for kindergarten through early childhood screenings um that support uh helping children, connecting them with school, um, resources for health and development. Um, also our Early Childhood Learning Center preschool classes, E T V and her staff do an excellent job of making sure that our kids are ready for kindergarten. Um, and this is also a key way that community education helps the district meet one of its world's best workforce goals as well. Supporting working families is another thing that we do, and that's through our Saints Overtime Program, which provides safe, fun environments for children to play after school. We're located at both of the elementary schools, and then in the summer, we're at North Elementary. And last year, we served one hundred and seventy children, seventy-two children. We have a new coordinator this year, her name is Carrie Erickson. And she and her staff are doing a great job of making a fun, safe environment for kids. As you can see from the pictures that are below this paragraph. Expanding learning beyond the school day is another way that we reach out to our community. Our after-school enrichment programs really help support students' social, emotional, and academic growth. And this also helps lead to narrowing the achievement gap for some of our students. The programs offering things like art, drama, music, and STEM help foster critical thinking and problem skills, which then lead on to benefiting students during the school day. And also engaging in leadership and service activities strengthens student skills and then helps mitigate some of those risk-taking behaviors that kids have. If you look at the picture to the right, that is from our summer chemistry camp that we held at Casavis. Building a qualified workforce is another way that we help. Nate Warden, the coordinator of our Adult Basic Education Program and his staff do a great job of empowering adults, helping them gain the skills and the qualifications that they need for employment, self-sufficiency, and also learning to be active participants in our community. We offer G E D classes and also high school diploma. Um, there are also English language classes, and we help people prepare for the citizenship test. We have a program called the Bridge to Work Readiness where adults learn job skills that they need. Things such as resume writing, interviewing, um, making decisions at the workplace. And all of our Adult Basic Ed classes are free. And last year, we welcomed adults from Mexico, Somalia, Guatemala, Honduras, Ukraine, Ethiopia, Pakistan, and Nicaragua. And in June, we were excited to um give diplomas to three people. And um this is a major undertaking for an adult to get their diploma because they're actually having to make up the credits that they missed as a high school student, which means the same amount of seat time. And so if you can picture an adult who has a family and a job, um, it can take a long time to get that diploma. So we're always really excited when someone makes that leap. Improving the quality of life is another way that we serve our community. We know that lifelong learning offers a lot of benefits, including stress, uh, relief, and then also helping people feel a sense of accomplishment, whether it's taking an art class, learning to play an instrument, developing a new skill, or picking up some safe driving tips in in one of our driver safety classes. Our programs engage people in meaningful and enjoyable ways. And if you look at the photo to the right, those are people attending one of the monthly documentary films that we have at the Historical Society. Lastly, recreate a sense of community and belonging for people. Offering classes and events that bring people together helps foster a strong, connected community. Whether it's attending the annual Women Celebrating Women event, which if you look at the picture to the left, you'll notice those are some of our staff members at South Elementary attending last year's Women Celebrating Women. Um, all of these different kinds of events help people to create opportunities where they can um build friendships and learn from each other and grow. We are extremely grateful to all of the organizations and businesses that partner with us. Um, last year, there were twenty-six of them. We, I always say it's great to live in Saint Peter because we have so many organizations and individuals who recognize the benefit of giving back to their community. And last year, we served over fifteen thousand people, which was a six and a half percent in for, increase from the year before. And if you see, the bottom of the page has more pictures from the last year and all the different events that we have. I would also like to thank our very dedicated staff who work hard to make sure all of these programs and events are successful. And um I know that they would agree with me when I say that it is a joy to serve our community and our school district. Does anyone have any questions?
Anything new planned for this year that that is kind of exciting or that you're particularly excited about?
Yes, in that we are starting a community choir. And you'll see that listed in our winter brochure, and so I'm really excited about that.
Cool, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, quarterly fund balance tracker update.
Well, the quarterly fund balance tracker is included in your, in your packet and your board book. As we indicated with the implementation of this quarterly fund balance tracker, we track our expenditure and revenue changes every three months. Uh, we share these changes regularly with the business committee at their monthly meetings. Um, and uh try to continue to uh evaluate how all of these changes impact our bottom line in terms of our budget. So you have, you can see that in the quarter one, quarter, quarterly fund balance changes, uh, we had a, and a positive adjustment of a hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. That uh reflects what actually occurred with the budget adjustment plan that was adopted in last spring. Adjustments due to different contracts. Uh, we shifted some employee time to the construction fund. And then a number of things with natural attrition. And natural attrition basically means somebody leaves and they're replaced or not replaced. And there's either a plus or a minus to those particular costs. In this case, it was a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to the plus. In quarter two, we've reflected the new transportation contract. Um, as we've indicated, our enrollment has continued to be strong. It's kind of interesting, it it bops up and down weekly by two to four to six students. So we were at twenty, thirty-four students two weeks ago, twenty, thirty-eight students last week, and twenty, thirty-four students this morning. So we watch it on a weekly basis. Uh, there are some shifts from some Q comp funding uh that uh are adding money to professional development. and then money that supports our reading intervention teachers at the K eight level. We've had to add some nurses' assistant time at North due to some high-need students, and the same with increasing hours for the nurse at North Intermediate, or North Elementary, excuse me. We've dealt with some new leaves and looked at what the difference is between what we were paying and now the people who are replacing them. We've added some temporary district office assistants primarily to catch up on some of the filing and routine work that needs to occur there. We will be needing to spend some more money in our English-language arts curriculum writing. Because of change in standards and the way that process has evolved, we are in a, all phase of the curriculum study will be occurring this year. So that means that we're going to have to pay some curriculum writing time during the school year. And then we're looking at the adoption of a new curriculum study plan, which adds another year for those areas that are under review. But you'll be seeing more specific information, but we're incorporating that into our Quarter Two process here. When you look at how that fiscal year twenty-five beginning unassigned general fund balance changes with those other identified Quarter One and Quarter Two items, there's about a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar-plus to where we thought we would be with the budget. Now, that's good news, but as we shared with the Business Committee, as we begin to roll things out over the next three years, that drops rather quickly. So our goal we're working on, as we're working with the Business Committee and working with the Business Manager and the Administration, is to shoot for a thirty-to thirty-six-day fund balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-eight. And that could involve the potential of an operating referendum, maybe in fall of twenty-six or something like that, or possibly not. Those are options that we're going to be evaluating and discussing, and then ultimately bringing back options for the entire board to consider and direct us as to how to move forward. So I'll stop there and see, any members of the Business Committee want to add anything as to what you heard in our report the other day?
Well, I would just publicly like to thank yourself and the Business Office staff for the efforts to keep the board more informed and up-to-date on what our financial condition is. Some of the things that we've done at your initiatives on the bus contract and that have been very helpful and very appreciative of that.
Good point, Bill. And in addition to that, the further out we go, obviously, the more moving parts there are. But between Dr. Olson and Megan and the rest of the staff do a really nice job of tracking what, if this happens, what happens here and here, and all the ramifications and ripple effects, and recognizing there are a lot of assumptions with those things. But it's really helpful to know where we're at at this point in time and then monitor it on a monthly basis.
And if we can get the Legislature to help us out, that changes our picture again, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, right.
I just really appreciate the updates and working to see something like this quarterly. And I really appreciate the thoughtful and calm way that we're approaching this. For somebody that's kind of following like all the time and saw that in the spring when we were trying to make these adjustments, like overall, how are we looking for next year? You know what I mean? And I, I'm trying to figure out, like, so we, I felt like we were all like, huh, 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 last spring, right? And now I'm sensing that, you know, we're okay, but you know what I mean? I'm just, I'm trying to think, like, are people thinking, are you just not worried about that now because we're not talking about that? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, wake up, people!
Yeah, no, we're, I mean, I think, I think we're always looking at what we need to do to have a stable budget plan. And, you know, we're not by any means in a position where we can say there aren't going to need to be some adjustments for next year, but we hope to minimize those adjustments to the extent possible. You know, there, just as an example, and we know three of our board members are going to be part of the Minnesota School Boards Association Delegate Assembly looking at resolutions to bring forward to the Legislature. Just as one example, we're seeing our compensatory revenue decline by six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars for next year. If the Legislature steps in and says we're going to have hold harmless on that, that changes the budget picture. So I think it's important that we're really looking at the budget in a very comprehensive manner right now, starting to look at potential options for stabilizing the budget. But we also have to make sure that we aren't moving too fast and getting people either too complacent or too shook up.
Yes.
That we kind of just maintain the fact that we're studying it very carefully, and plans will be coming forth to the board to start looking at in January with the goal of having an adjustment plan adopted in March.
Okay, you said what I needed you to say. You know what, I just, and I really like when you say budget stabilization versus saying budget cuts or other things. Like, I do think it is a stabilization thing, like, we aren't, because we aren't awful. I mean, we're not powered up or anything like that, and our enrollment has gone up. I mean, we have a six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar positive number on there.
Right.
And so we are a lot better off than we thought we were in the spring.
Correct.
So anyways, people talk. Do you know what I mean? And so I just, like, well, now you guys just are kind of like, your heads are in the clouds and you're not think, you're not just, you're not acknowledging where you're at. I mean, that's what I'm being told. And so, no, we're not. We're just approaching this calmly, and we are better off than we thought.
We are.
Thank you.
I think there are a couple of factors, Tracy, that you always have to be aware of. Starting next spring again, negotiations open up with all our employee units, so that becomes a very critical part of the budget stabilization, along, of course, with the fact that this spring's legislative session, the Legislature adopts a two-year state budget, and how those factors affect one another as well as our budget. You know, last go-around, we heard about the historical increase in education funding, but a lot of it you could put in the general fund and had strings attached to it. And that's one of the things, as I started to look through the Delegate Assembly Guidebook, is a lot of those resolutions are for money, but it's not general fund money. And I'm thinking, you know, we have to be careful of that because all we'll hear again is how much money they give us. But we don't have the use, so that becomes important. And you don't want to put the whole balancing of the budget on the back of the employees, but that is the largest expenditure we have in our budget. So you have to balance all those things. And then hopefully, next week, we'll get good news when we open bids and that type of stuff. Because there's, there are a lot of things that are moving parts. It's just hard to put that on paper for people to see. Here, what we're seeing is kind of what's already happened.
Yeah.
And then you try and project what's going to happen.
Well, looking at it quarterly is helpful. You know what I mean? And every little thing matters, you know?
Well, the nice thing about doing it quarterly is that you should have those major end-of-the-year type surprises. Because we can say, yeah, we anticipated this.
Yes.
This was not anticipated, that type of stuff.
Agreed.
Just as notification, it is quarterly to the board, but Business Committee looks at this monthly.
Yes, good point. And like Dr. Olson and the Business Officer, looking at it daily.
Every minute, yeah.
Yeah, they're not just looking at the budget quarterly.
Exactly.
You know, one of the things I would add is, is working with our administrative team. We're continually looking for ways to be more effective and efficient as well. And sometimes there are things that you don't think are major potential changes, but they are. So we're looking at things like our electrical costs. And what happens if we start to work on behaviors like turning lights off more frequently when you're leaving the office or, you know, whatever the case might be? There are a lot of things like that that can have an impact. And a lot of small things move together to be a big thing. So lots of those things happening.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
And thanks to the Business Committee for doing all that work.
Okay, next up, Review of Policy Manual Revisions for First Reading.
You've got two policies that are coming in front of you for first reading. Policy four sixteen, Drug, Alcohol, and Cannabis Testing. There's some language legislatively added about oral fluid testing. But then there are also changes that we need to make to be more in line with MSBA model policy language. And that's the same with Policy four eighteen, Drug-Free Workplace, Drug-Free School. That adds some protections for persons with, in the Minnesota Patient Registry Program. But again, matching model policy means that we have looked at some pretty significant changes to pull into compliance with a better match with what model policy is, and that's with what the statute reflects. So again, this is a first reading. I would say that the drug, alcohol, and cannabis testing, as you take a look at that, one of the things you'll note is a lot of that language is, has to do with bus drivers. And we don't, we have our own bus drivers. We have a transportation contract. But it is a required policy. And one of the things that we shared at the Policy Committee level is that on an annual basis, the Superintendent, and I just did this a week ago, connects with the transportation provider to ensure that they're meeting these drug, alcohol, and cannabis testing requirements that are in both state and federal law. So take a look at those, see if you have questions or suggestions. And the Policy Committee will be reviewing these again in December.
Yep.
So you mentioned adding that language because that's not in the model language, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there are some, we do have some policies that you specifically identify, something that the Superintendent of Schools does as far as a report or action on an annual basis. We could add that language specifically so it doesn't get lost, that there's an annual check with the transportation provider. That would be a good, I think, a good addition.
Any other questions or comments about that right now, those policies for first reading? If you do have things in the interim, talk to the Policy Committee, because we'll meet in December to talk about it again. Item number four, Review the Development of a St. Peter School Board Legislative Platform.
Yeah, a number of you have talked to me about having our own legislative platform that we could move out to the public and to our elected representatives and state senator. And that's something that's been done in the past in our district where we've developed a legislative platform. So if something like that were to occur, I outlined four potential steps that could be taken. Establish an ad hoc legislative committee at the December sixteenth School Board Meeting. That would include identifying duties and purposes of the committee, which you have for your standing committees right now. The committee would meet early January to establish a draft platform. That would be brought forward for adoption at January twenty-third School Board Meeting. And then we would be able to share that platform with our local, again, what I said, representatives and state senator. So if there's interest in moving forward with that, we'd bring back this kind of plan. In visiting with Chair Potts, we wanted to get it in front of you to see if that's something we should move forward with.
I would be in favor of that.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think it's very excellent, A D M. Do you know, I'm sorry.
No, you go.
Do you know the date the legislative session starts?
It's January, it's back early in January. Early in January again.
Because of.
Probably right around the time of the MSBA Leadership Conference.
Yeah, twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second.
Right in there, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, well, we'll bring that one, we'll bring that one back.
January fourteenth.
Very good.
Twelve PM on Tuesday, January fourteenth.
Excellent.
According to Google.
This is a gentleman who's prepared. Well done.
Was that in AI or was that just?
Looks real. I don't know.
He just made something. Well, that's usually about when it is.
Yeah.
I can remember.
Yep. All right, update on twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six district calendar.
Just included that. For your updated information, you adopted the calendar start and end dates for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year a month ago. You'll just see the addition of where there are parent-teacher conferences, and then how that impacts the first day of school for K eight students. And it really then is the comprehensive school calendar with those particular dates in it. And this will be shared out, put on the website, shared with our other educational partners in the community, our Spells, John Ireland, Minnesota Valley Education District, et cetera.
Thank you. That's all of the information items. Next up is reports, Building Principles.
Without Etive here, I guess I will go first.
You're first.
Hi again. It's a different group of friends this time. So we were, we just had a really great conference session in November at South Elementary. We have really great participation from our families, so we are very glad they came in. It's a really good time for our teachers to share academic data, you know, starting point. We do a lot of assessments right at the beginning of the year, and it's amazing for kids and families to then talk about how far they've already come. And a lot of the measures that they're talking about are letter recognition at kindergarten, how many letters did they know that first week of school compared to how many they know now? And it's really fun for parents, I think, to see that improvement. And then same in first grade, it's more about sounds, and so letter sounds and letter blends, what are kids learning? So very fun times at conferences, lots of smiling faces and kids showing off projects. Like the girls said, we're talking about gratitude and through our character strong, lots of class discussions. But I also just want to mention in the spirit of gratitude that November fourteenth was Community Education Appreciation Day. So it was fun, very timely to hear from Tammy. But thanks to everything that community education does and the Saints OT Program itself, it's just really going well this year. It was also National School Psychology Week last week. We have three great school psychologists in our district that really contribute to interventions, academic interventions, special education assessments and services. And so we're grateful for Nancy Christensen, Dr. Lindsay Finch, and Missy Engel. And then this week later is National Substitute Appreciation Day. And I have to mention this because you probably saw on the Consent Agenda, many family medical leaves. And so we have subs that are coming for a day at a time, and we have some subs that are coming for weeks at a time. And so I just want to recognize that they really do help in our buildings, make things run smoothly, even those absences. We celebrated World Kindness Day last week at South Elementary. We all wore blue in the spirit of kindness, and we did fun activities like bubble gum during Free Choice. We got to hear about World Kindness Day. We're motivated by lots of things. Um, one of.
The custodians like.
You know, they showed star pride at their bubble gum, so they made good choices. So, okay. One of the things that, as a former South Elementary parent, that is fun for me to see now as an employee in the building is some of the family projects that are going home. And I think it's worth mentioning because we do want our families to be engaged. And I think it's worth mentioning, because we do want our families to be engaged, starting at kindergarten. And so, our kids bring home pumpkins in October, and they work on them as a family. It's just a paper pumpkin. And now, we're doing the turkey project, so all the turkeys are going home and they're starting to trickle back. So, if anyone makes it through to South Elementary, check out the walls for the family turkey projects. They are looking fantastic. And then the other thing that we're really looking forward to, do you remember that?
I remember that.
It's like a longstanding tradition. I have Callan and Tyler's turkeys in my house.
Go have my turkey too.
Yeah, see? It's great. So, the Art in STEM is currently doing a great collaboration project called Balloons Over Broadway. So, there's a partnership between the two classes. They read the book Balloons Over Broadway about the first inventor and puppeteer for the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. And so, the kids are now designing and engineering balloons out of paper, and they've got sticks. So, they are going to be doing a Balloons Over Broadway parade next Wednesday, right before Thanksgiving. So, that is the next thing that I am really looking forward to itself. So, thank you.
Good stuff. Greetings from North Elementary School. Big week going on this week. We have our fall play. We've never had a fall play. We usually do the spring play. And because we have so many students interested in the play, we're doing the fall and the spring. So, it's the Reluctant Dragon. Shows on Wednesday. There's a matinee at one thirty. For North students, and just, just North students, the Zingle Dinger, you cannot attend. Could maybe sneak you in the back door. But that crew has, they've been working since the beginning of the school year. So, and the stage looks phenomenal. Mr. Lenhoff is our director. He's been doing it for a number of years, and he's recruited his whole family. They come in just about every Monday and Wednesday to help out with that, and the kids are excited. And I'm excited to see it too. There's also a community showing that evening at six, you know.
Six o'clock.
Thank you, six o'clock. I keep, I keep thinking six thirty, because we originally put that on the calendar. But I know it's, it's six o'clock. So, everyone is welcome. So, show up at North Wednesday evening. Also, we have quite a crew going right now for Continental Math. Continental Math is for second, third, and fourth graders. We started that up again last year. And it's enrichment math for after school, and actually, we just open it up to any student that wants to participate. And so, they have coaching sessions, and then they have meets. Second grade has three meets throughout the school year, and then third and fourth grade has five. So, we'll see how they do compared to all the rest of the Continental Math students around the area. And I believe we have around fifty, fifty to sixty students that have signed up for that. So, that's, that's great. And that's Mr. Robinson is our math coach after school.
Maybe the math coach was the student who was here last month.
Yes. Yes, he is part of that. Also, our annual event, I can't believe that it's going on this many years already. We have North Clothes Closet going on this Friday. So, at all of the offices, there's a collection, huge collection box that is very full at each of the sites. And so, this, this Friday, starting probably a little after one o'clock, it's an early release, Quinn Rasbach with her volunteers, and I believe one of her volunteers is sitting up here as well, bring all the clothing together and put it on display in the North Gym. And it's, it is just a fabulous community event that she started thinking about in third grade. And it's still going today. And it's, it's the, the opportunity, I mean, Quinn's got to move on here, not this year, but after next year. But she's already has plans in place to have people take over for her, and they're under, being trained this year. And so, we're looking forward to that. We have a lot of clothing already outside in the hallway, in the front hallway. And they have about four hours to get that all on display. And I think they have like ten racks from like shields that were donated a number of years ago, tables all over the place. It's free. Any community member can show up. You check out the clothing and you take what you think you can use. And I'm looking forward to it again. And we were talking about, if you, if you saw the Facebook post, we're looking at probably renaming it. I think it's got a little better, every, every good business has to be rebranded every once in a while. So, I'm thinking, I suggested, you know, Quinn's Closet at North, probably after next year. Yep, after she hands it off. So, she's made a pretty, yeah, pretty special mark on the building and the community, just by an idea. So, congratulations to Quinn, and we'll look forward to offering that to the community again. And as you know, our theme, for some reason, we have gratitude as well going on at North. Is that just a coincidence or what? Part of our SCL curriculum, but our students have been working on writing notes of gratitude to people in, in the building. So, staff, each other, probably some of the best notes are when students show gratitude to each other. Like, that is the most powerful thing. But they're hanging them up in the hallway all over the place. They give them to each other. And then, in my weekly parent update, I put a link in there for parents to provide gratitude, like practice gratitude back to people in the building. And so, it's so fun hearing the teachers and the staff saying like, I got a note from so-and-so's parent, or, you know, the parents of so-and-so and so-and-so. Like, it just lights up their whole day. So, not only are the students practicing it, but we've asked the parents to do that too. So, thank you, parents that have been doing that. And the ultimate showing of the theme of the month of thankfulness and gratitude, we have to have our Turkey Bingo. You can come to that, Dr. Graff, if you'd like, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So, if you want to see some second, third, and fourth graders gobbling down the hallway all the way to receive their prize for winning bingo, you can join us for that. One thirty on Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
I would attend your Turkey Bingo, but we are also doing Turkey Bingo.
Okay, all right, at a middle school level.
Former North teachers are keeping that role.
Keep it going. Keep the turkey going.
So, last Wednesday, our sixth graders participated in our Biz Town interviews. And if you remember, those are hosted by local business community members. We had ten volunteers this year. Students apply for jobs. They interview and then are ultimately chosen for jobs based on their performance in interviews. And I think we've been doing this now for six years. And for the first time ever, two of those members were so impressed that they're going to come with the sixth grader, go with the sixth grader to Biz Town next Monday to support and to find out more about what Biz Town's really like. Next, Student Council hosted its fall dance last Friday. Very well attended. Students did very well. Everybody wore neon, and we had black lights, I almost said blue lights, black lights all over, so everybody glowed. On a positive note, I learned a new TikTok dance. On a negative note, I got knocked out of the limbo competition round one. I'm going to have to practice that. Tomorrow, all of our students will start their day in the gym. Representatives from the High School Musical, the Adams Family, will be joining our, our assembly and giving us a little preview and generating some excitement for the show. And that is going to happen, I'm sure you'll tell us about it.
They will, they sure will. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday matinee.
It's going to be good. It's going to be good. We had our, our, sorry, we will have our November early release on Friday. Teachers will spend the first hour of that early release at SPMS talking about writing. Our goal is to increase writing opportunities, develop some effective writing strategies, and ultimately create a learning progression of expectations around writing over the next few years. And then, lastly, we've got some concerts coming up. Just want to throw those out there to folks. SPMS Choir Concert is December fifth, and the Band Concert is December twelfth, all at the High School Performing Arts Center.
Thank you. At the high school, we had another lovely Veterans Day program last Monday. Thank you to those of you who were able to be there. Jenna Schmidtky from Wells was our, was our speaker this year. And, and the kids' response was, was very positive for her. So, that's always a, a great event to see the veterans who, who come up for coffee and donuts before every year. And it's also really important for our kids to, to have that opportunity to thank their veterans. So, we're happy to host that every year. And the biggest news at the high school, obviously, is the Adams Family Musical coming up this weekend. Again, you're all invited. And it, I, it is, it is such a fun week. Those kids are wearing their T-shirts. And I don't know if there's going to be a flash mob, but in years past, they've, they do a lot of marketing for their own, for their shows. So, we're really excited about it. And I got to say, like, I have gratitude for my colleagues up here. So, thank you for reminding us that it was the month of gratitude, you guys.
She must want something.
Yep.
So nice.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Olson.
I have three things for you. The first one is that our bid opening date has changed. It was originally scheduled for Thursday, November twenty-first, this Thursday at three thirty PM in the Middle School Theater. It has now been shifted to Tuesday, November twenty-sixth at three thirty PM in the Middle School Theater. And the reason for the change is the need for a number of clarifications on, the specifications are included in the bid documents. And our general contractor, ICS, felt like in order to ensure that those clarifications were out there and in front of potential bid folk, that the extra days would be important. They also assured us, Seth and I were on a phone call with them this morning, that they would be prepared to have all of the documentation to us by Wednesday, the twenty-seventh. So, they said, we said, that's on you, and they're, they're ready to move with that. In your bi-monthly update, you'll see an updated strategic plan for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. We think it's important that, that the strategic directions that you set continue to be examined with very specific goals under each of those areas. So, take a look at that. If you have any questions, let me know. And then the last thing, we've been getting some really good media coverage on a number of our programs at the high school. We had coverage on our Building Trades Program in terms of building the Habitat House, on our ag program for their farming and harvesting. And then, most recently, this last weekend, there was a feature story in the Mankato Free Press about our coral and performing arts program. So, all of those are fantastic things. Very proud of the things that are going on all, in all of the buildings in our district. And it's good to get that kind of recognition. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members around the table. Ms. Rasbach.
I'm excited to go see the Adams Family and hopefully also the Reluctant Dragon. I'm very excited for our students. And in the spirit of gratitude, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Dougherty and the teachers at North who supported Quinn and her idea and let that happen and blossom, because that has meant a lot to her through the years, and it's been fun watching her grow up with that. So, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
In that regard, when I was talking to Rita earlier, and Quinn's already famous, and when she becomes even more rich and famous, I'm her agent. I've got dibs there, guys. All right, and, and the spirit of the word of the evening gratitude, we do have a lot to be appreciative of. There's certainly challenges, but there are a lot of very, very good things happening in the district. So, thank you.
I'm good. Well, I am gra, I'm thankful and all that stuff. I guess after that, I should at least say that one. Otherwise, I kind of look like a horse of love again. But, yeah, I'm thankful.
I feel it. I can feel it, the genuine gratitude that you're expressing.
Do you feel it?
Yeah, I do. I was just going to mention a reminder about our December second study session as a board. I look forward to having, we're going to talk about the next steps in the superintendent's search process. And we're going to have representative from MSBA and someone from the South Central Service Co-op to be there to talk about the services they provide in the search process. So, I look forward to that. And just wanted to remind you that that's the big topic.
And we're still starting at six?
We do. We will have a special meeting at six.
Yeah, so, and we, we'll, the entire meeting will actually be a special meeting, because rather than having a special board meeting, then, you know, adjourning and going to a study session, we can continue with the same business as we move forward there. So, it starts at six PM, and, and hopefully, we'll have good news on awarding bids at that point in time.
Mr. Cowell.
Yeah, in the spirit of gratitude, I was going to thank Ms. Zingle Dinger and the high school for the veterans program. It's the first time since I've been on the faculty that I was able to attend it. And I was very impressed with the program and, and the reaction of the students to the speaker. It was very, for me, it was kind of a difficult thing to listen to, but it was, it, it was very impressive. And then, Dr. Olson mentioned, but Rita and Kate, myself, will be headed up to Bloomington, not, well, a couple of weeks. I think it's the fifth and sixth of December, six and seven. So, we'll do our best to try and get some things on the agenda for our lobbyists for the legislature.
Gratitude for the entire community and school system and community ed especially. This is amazing place to live at this point in time. And I also have a suggestion for Quinn's Closet. I like the name. We've got a bunch of tables that we're trying to get rid of, and, you know, if you need any more, we got some of those. Just an idea.
He's already, he's already given us some of those.
Thank you.
All right, any committee updates? Education Committee, anything to share?
I don't really think, I mean, we talked about some of it. We talked about flexible learning. We're going to have flexible learning, like we always do. I don't think there's really anything else we need to, we'll talk about in the study session at some point, I would guess.
Perfect. Business Committee, I heard a lot from you tonight, but anything else?
I think the budget and the quarterly tracker and that just, hopefully, if you have requests for any additional information, let us know.
Thank you. Policy Committee.
I would, I think we've talked a lot about it. I would just suggest that if people have comments to make, please get ahold of the Policy Committee meeting. Our meeting is scheduled for December eleventh, and we would love to have input. Thank you.
I did think of one thing.
Yeah, sure.
With the flexible learning, if anybody is listening, it's maybe important to understand that with the way the schedule is built this year and with the South's having to have a minimum number of hours, that there will be flexible learning for all of the days that the school is out this year. Maybe that would be helpful for people to know.
Correct. And then HR Committee, anything?
No, but I imagine we'll have to start gearing up pretty soon.
All right, thank you. We do have some upcoming meetings of the board. The special school board meeting, Monday, December second, at the Middle School Media Center, starting at six PM. Business Committee, Policy Committee, and Education Committee all meet in December right before, the week before our regular board meeting, which is Monday, December sixteenth, right here in the governor's room.
And just to reemphasize, the bids will be open
Yes.
On the twenty-sixth.
On the twenty-sixth. All right. So, second only to the student spotlight, our next favorite agenda item is motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
In a sec.
All sec.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Technically, you can do.